All right. All right. We are back. We are back in session. Thank you for that brief pause. Mr. Moore.
Okay. We're on Article 20 now, which is an earth removal conditional exemption. Under our current zoning bylaws, the site review plan requires, or the site review plan is required for any grading, clearing, or land development in a project of this that requires a special permit. So, well, I mean, it's a site review plan, so everything is required for everything. So, any kind of land movement, grading, clearing, or land development is covered already under the zoning bylaw. And what this amendment is asking for is to exempt, exempt the, add an exemption for this project, or projects like it, under the general bylaw. The general bylaw does not include grading, clearing, and land development as an exemption for something that requires, for, under the earth removal bylaws. So, this is really trying to avoid having to do the same thing twice. Because site, grading, clearing, and land development is already required under the site plan review, so having to go before the earth removal committee for the same thing is duplicity of effort. So, what the ask is here is that this amendment be, this exemption be added to the zoning bylaw, so that the same thing doesn't have to happen twice.
All right. Mr. Belbin.
Does, now, with earth removal, there's a, what is it, per yard or whatnot fee, or per truck or whatever tipping fee?
Mm-hmm.
How is that controlled if it's not through the earth removal committee?
It would be controlled under the site review plan.
Site plan review. They can't, they can't charge a fee in the same way that the earth removal committee is authorized to, as far as I know.
They can't.
The planning board, no. That's just for, they can charge an applicant for consultant fees, but as far as I know, they can't. They're not authorized the same way earth removal is.
All right. But the exemptions they're asking for says, "Moving of earth materials under the provision of a duly approved subdivision plan. Work required as part of the state and/or federal permit or other requirement work necessary for the construction of streets and the installation of utilities, or work in connection with the excavation, move, or filling, and/or grading of land. Incidental construction of a duly permitted structure and associated improvements approved as part of the site plan review." So, this is-
That's right. But under the site plan review, this is just to address Mr. Belbin's question. They can't charge those fees which are used to, in the upkeep of our roads.
That's, that's true.
Right.
But what it's trying to do is streamline the process, so that the same plans do not have to go in front of the earth removal committee.
I understand. I got it.
Anything else from anyone? Is there a motion to put Article 20 on the warrant? Is there a motion to put Article 20 on the warrant? I'll make a motion to put Article 20 on the warrant. Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
All right. Discussion.
I just, I don't like bypassing the earth removal fee, and if this is just to help this one project up there, I don't see them removing a lot of earth, to be totally honest. I see them bringing in more earth. They've already brought in a lot already there, so I can't see bypassing the earth removal process. I can't see that. I'm sorry.
And I understand their possible objections folks might have to this. I just think if the redevelopment authority thinks it's necessary, that we should make them, let them make their presentation to town meeting, and let town meeting decide. And that's why I made the motion to put it on the warrant. So, is there-
Two quick questions. So, specifically, this is for the project? Or will this also, in your opinion, affect future projects as well?
It would affect any projects that would fit the criteria of the exemption, which is, you know, as I said, of any approved plans, anything that's been approved. Subdivision, federal or government work, or work connected, connection with duly permitted structures and associated improvements as part of the site review plan.
So, we've had projects like this in the past?
I don't believe at this scale, but, you know, people, people move earth all around to create parking lots. I'm sure that they did that at the two little green buildings that are up next to Quickies now. They, I know they moved earth around there, and that was part of the site review plan. I don't think they went to earth removal to do that. I don't know the answer to that 100 percent, but, yeah, this is basically so that the, that you don't have to do the same thing twice in front of two different committees. The site review plan will allow support for removal, movement, and reconfiguration of earth. So, there are conflicting laws here, is basically what it is. One bylaw says the site review plan governs that, and the other one says that you have to go to earth removal. So, it's basically the same thing being asked to go in front of having two different governing bodies act on the same exact thing.
Ms. Hewens.
I have a question. So, I don't believe, to your point, Mr. Hoffman, I don't believe that anyone building a subdivision has ever gone, been required to go to earth removal, to the earth removal committee for an earth removal permit. I think the earth removal, but, I don't have the earth removal bylaw in front of me, none of us do, but it seems to me that they have very particular requirements for, requiring an applicant to come to them now, without adding this.
I don't have, I can pull up the zoning bylaw, and look at the exemption. There are four right now. Can I have a second?
Take your time.
There's a newer informational summary too, which I'd like to read, and I have-
Please do.
Computer.
I said, please, please do read it.
Yeah, I will, as soon as I get up here. I thought there was, I missed one. There doesn't seem to be. Okay.
And Mr. Moore, just please remember to speak into the microphone.
Yes, I will.
See, if you want me to read that, the informational summary that we have here?
I have it here.
Mr. Belbin, why don't you read it while you-
I'll read it while you're getting your stuff ready, so people know. This is the informational summary for Article 20, Earth Removal Conditional Exemptions. While it appears that the proposed Green Business Park project is exempt from the earth removal requirement of zoning bylaw, under the zoning bylaw definition of earth removal, there is a separate Earth Removal General Bylaw, Chapter 90.1, which, nine, I'm sorry, 9.1, which does not appear to include an applicable exemption, Chapter 9.1.8, for our project. In order to streamline the review process, avoid duplication of effort, and to continue to monitor earth removal operations part of the customary project review process, this change is proposed to include an exemption from the Earth Removal General Bylaw, if earth removal is already being removed, reviewed under a separate zoning process. It appears the general bylaw is intended to apply to a commercial sand and gravel, and the proposed modifications preserve the town's right to continue to regulate a commercial sand and gravel operation. With such exemption, the town remains protected, as such earth removal operations would still be reviewed as part of the site plan review, or subdivision review, in addition to review by the Conservation Commission.
Right. I'm having trouble getting up to, getting the internet here. I don't have the zoning bylaws printed out.
Mr. Moore, would you like us to move along to the next article and give you a chance to bring that up?
Yes, if I could.
Okay.
Wouldn't mind.
No, that's fine. Why don't we move along to a discussion on Article 32, which I believe you will find on page 33, the zoning bylaw, Section 2700, Transfer Development Rights Bylaw Amendment. That is page 33.
Tom, are you addressing that for the point?
Yeah, Mr. Bott, are you addressing?
I certainly am.
Okay.
You can come up here if you want, save us some time. Tom, do you want to?
Thank you for joining us this morning, Mr. Bott. We appreciate it.
Thank you for having me. So, I'm Tom Bott, I'm the interim town planner here in Carver, and addressing the transfer development rights bylaw. Now, this has been, something that's been in the works with Serpent, Regional Planning Agency, and the planning board for some time, and in the transition, the change of horses that you made. We've got a version of the bylaw that is the most recent one that we're, that we know of. There may actually be another one, and we'll be looking at amending that during the hearing. That's the process of the planning board hearings. It's always been my take that if you come to a hearing with bylaw, and there are no changes to it, you are either just brilliant, or you're not participating in the process of reviewing a bylaw and looking at changes to that. So, the bylaw that's been presented is the most recent draft that we have. We're working with Serpent to see if, how we might be tweaking that, and over the next couple of weeks, we'll be working staff-wise at looking at any changes that we might be presenting at the hearings. But this is a longstanding work, trying to get to this point. It's been hampered by, you know, mapping capabilities and working with Serpent, so it is one of those things that I certainly hope this select board will add to the agenda, or add to the warrant, and we'll be discussing it more in depth, and making any amendments during the hearings on March 30th and March 31st.
Thank you. Are there questions on the board on Article 32?
I have-
Ms. Hewens.
One. And the version I'm looking at, Mr. Bott, I have comments from Amy Cressel, our land use attorney, and she says, "I cannot figure out if the planning board is proposing to delete existing Section 2700 and replace with a new one. If so, it needs to state that, but there is also strike-through language. However, it appears sections have been changed without the changes reflected in bold or strike-through. If it is a delete and replace, it should state that and then show the proposed new section. If they are looking to amend the existing section, all changes must be reflected by additions in bold and deletions in strike-through." And my question is, has that been done? Is there a version in which that's what she's asking, been done?
No, there's not, and I got Amy's comments as well. And typically, if you've got a bylaw and you're changing part, let's just say that, you know, you're looking, just as an example, you're changing something from, you know, 400 square feet to 800 square feet. That is one of those things where the language in the warrant might say, "Move to replace the language in section whatever." In the case of the TDR bylaw, that warrant language would likely be more adequate, as Amy pointed out, to say, "To replace Section 2700 Transfer Development Rights with a new bylaw." So, that would be the typical warrant language you would see for something like that, because we're talking about, you know, relatively large changes to the bylaw. So, remove and replace. For the purposes of the hearing, it's great to have the bold and strike-through version for those people who want to follow on to see what's being changed, but likely the warrant language would say, "To remove and replace Section 2700 with a new transfer development rights bylaw."
But then, then the town meeting members won't know what they're, what they're replacing, and whether they think it's appropriate. I guess my preference, I understand what you're saying, we've both done this for a while, but I would prefer having it strike-through and showing what was originally there.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea, as we, as we get ready to print the warrant, that that language says, "Replace as, replace Article 27," and show in the warrant that language is being changed with the bold and strike-through.
Oh, so it will be in the warrant?
Yeah, I would venture to say, we put the entirety of the changes in the bylaw, but the article itself would say, "To replace Article 27," and then have the bold and strike-through version, so people can follow.
Okay. That's good.
It's going to use a couple more pages.
That's fine.
But clarity is what makes it easier for people to vote.
Right. People want to know what they're, what they're voting to change.
I agree, and just to, to just comment on Ms. Hewen, what Ms. Hewens had to say, I think in anything we do, anytime we make a change like that, we should always show, show the language that's being changed, because otherwise, people just don't know what they're, what they're doing, what they're acting on, so.
And to that, and to that effect, we have the proposed zoning language in the town clerk's office. It's in the planning office, the inspections department office. It's also posted on the website. We want to have those articles on the website, too. If you go to the planning page website, you'll see those articles that are in, online as well, and we've also shared a copy with the library. So, all the zoning articles from the RDA, from the planning board, are in the library as well, because their hours are different from ours, and includes Saturday. So, you can find what's being discussed in any of the zoning articles, in the town clerk's office, in the planning office, at the library, or online.
Thank you. Anything else on this article? Is there a motion to put Article 32 on the warrant?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? I'll second it. We have a motion and a second to put Article 32 on the warrant. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
No.
Ms. Hewens, did you vote?
I'll vote aye.
So, three to one. It is on the warrant. Thank you, Mr. Bott.
I'm sorry, who voted again?
Me. All right. Mr. Moore.
I'm in a, I'm in a better place.
Okay. Back to Article, Article 20.
Okay. So, basically, under the town general bylaws, 9.1.8, earth removal conditional exemptions are, there are four of them. Earth removal involving less than 200 cubic yards for a single or two-family lot, or less than 1,000 cubic yards for an industrial multifamily or commercial project. B, removal necessary for the reconstruction of existing streets and the installation of utilities. C, removal performed in connection with any town, state, and/or federal projects. And D, removal necessary for normal cranberry-related activities, et cetera. So, there is no, there is nothing in our general bylaw that exempts a earth removal or earth management that is covered in a site review plan. There is no exemption currently in the general bylaws to allow for that. It does, in effect, require going to both earth removal and site review for the same thing.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, would you read the exemptions again? Because it says for subdivisions, which requires site plan review. It says for commercial, which requires site plan review. Right?
Industrial multifamily and/or commercial project.
And it lists subdivisions as well?
It does not list subdivisions. Earth removal including, involving less than 200 cubic yards for a single or two-family lot, or less than 1,000 cubic yards for an industrial multifamily and/or commercial project. B, removal necessary for the reconstruction of existing streets and the installation of utilities. C, removal performed in connection with any town, state, and/or federal projects. And D, removal necessary for normal cranberry-related activities or other agricultural uses.
Okay. Thank you.
So, a subdivision is not included as an exemption.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, this, this request to add this as an exemption in this section of the, of the general bylaws is to make it so that the, that the earth removal committee does not have to vote on the same thing that the site plan review has accommodated.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Mr. Belbin.
So, I understand the idea of duplication of the same thing. If I remember correctly, Plimpton, when they were going through Cisco, they actually had a sit-down with all the boards, committees, and they all sat around the table and had their own time to speak and to listen to the project or whatnot. I'm, I find Carver could do the same thing, is through the site plan review, is call in the earth community at the same time, meet, hear that portion of it, so everyone understands, has their question and answer time, and then you're not, you're not duplicating the earth. You're all in the same room at the same time. I think that would solve that problem. So, we wouldn't need a bylaw.
You would need a bylaw to require that the earth removal committee be part of the site plan review? Is that what-
No, I'm saying you wouldn't need this if you just call in the earth removal committee at the same time you guys are going to discuss the-
Oh, I see.
Utilizing it. I mean, just bring everyone in the same room and say, "Here you go." My personal thing is, say, bring in zoning, planning, conservation, do it on one weekend or something like that, have a big old meeting and a powwow with everybody, and say, "Hey, here we go. Let's all talk about this issue here and this issue there." And it may take time, but you know what? You're all in the same place. Get it all done. As I say, get it done.
All right. So, are you talking about for this specific project, or any project that would be covered with this exemption, such as?
Why not? If we can do it with one, let's do it with all of them. I mean, if you want to turn around and instead of having a bylaw that exempts it, this gets away, say, "Well, you can deal with it here," well, let's just try and look at it from a different perspective. So, just my thought process on it.
I understand that. I think the site review plan, there's already a prescribed group of people that come in for that. I suppose they could add earth removal, but it would also, it would also fall under, in this particular case, a special permitting, which is another venue where earth removal could, could be, could play a part. So, I think what, no, I think that what you read in the informational summary is what is trying to be avoided here, which is the duplication of effort and to streamline the process. It still does have to go for the site review, and any kind of earth removal that falls under the jurisdiction of conservation would have to go in front of them as well. So, that's, that's why this is being asked for, just to kind of make it so that they don't have to present the same thing to two different boards. I don't, I'm not saying that earth removal shouldn't be involved, but I don't think that what the intent is here is to not make it, is to exempt it from earth removal and have it covered by the site, site plan review.
Anything else, Mr. Hoffman?
So, a question. So, subdivision still has to do with the dual process?
Evidently.
Okay. So, and just my own curiosity, why, why wouldn't this, a subdivision be included in this as well? I know this is a much larger project, I'm just trying to figure out why.
It is included in that. In the amendment, subdivision is included. Removal or filling performed in connection with the moving of earth materials under the provisions, oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Work required as part of the state or federal permit.
It's, it's in the second line.
Yeah, it's the first sentence.
I'm sorry.
In connection with the moving of earth materials under the provision of a duly approved subdivision plan. The first line in the exemption. So, it would include a subdivision plan. It would, it would include construction of streets, not just, the current exemption is reconstruction of existing streets, so this would also include construction of new streets. And also anything that was, anything that's already been permitted by a duly permitted structure associated with improvements as part of the site review plan.
So, I guess what wouldn't be exempt?
Yeah. And this is, this is allowing removal of earth over the amount specified in the earth removal bylaw to bypass the earth removal committee, essentially, correct? Article 20, Earth Removal Conditional Exemptions. In other words, the current earth removal bylaw specifies how many yards has to come before earth removal, and this is saying, anything more than that, any huge, huge project doesn't need to come before earth removal. Is that?
It's, it's basically saying that the earth removal component of a large project is covered under the site plan review. So, why would it need to be, why would it need to happen twice?
Because, because site plan review doesn't typically, they don't deal with earth removal And they don't, they don't, they can't levy the same fees as the earth removal committee.
A site review plan, under Section Zoning 3113, a site review plan is required for grading, clearing, and land development. It's required. So, yes, they have to do it.
Right. That's what I was getting at. Thank you.
So, under zoning, they have, they have to go before a site review plan to do any grading.
Site plan review.
Site plan review. And, and currently, it says that they have to go in front of earth removal for the same thing as well.
Okay.
Anything else from the board? All right.
And I'm sorry to keep asking these type of questions. So, what projects would have to go before, if this is approved, what projects would have to go before earth removal?
Any kind of sand mining operations.
So, sand and gravel?
Yes.
Okay. Everything else would be exempt if this?
The exemptions would be what are listed here.
Right.
Subdivision, streets, any, any project that's already been approved.
Okay. So, the majority of projects done in this town would probably be exempt, except for sand and gravel removal.
They would be exempt from the earth removal review, because it would be covered in the site plan review.
Okay. I'm just trying to get the-
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Again, all we're voting on is putting Article 20 on the warrant. We have a motion and a second. All in favor of putting Article 20 on the warrant? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So, it's three to one? Correct? All right. Thank you, Mr. Moore.
I think that's it. I don't think there was anything else.
Mr. Moore, before you leave, could you just, um-
Wait, one second.
So, was Article 18, too? Did we already deal with that? The article permitting signs for green business parks by the RDA?
I don't think we did.
It's not on our agenda. I don't see it on our agenda.
I just noticed it, so.
Well.
I think it was already accepted to the warrant.
Was it?
Yeah.
This was basically just the one adding Green Business Park to the sign, the zoning bylaw about signs, which already included highway, commercial, and industrial districts?
Yeah.
So, that's all it was.
I thought we- I thought we already reported to put that on the agenda. I think we did. Mr. Moore, before you leave, could you just re-speak for the public the list of dates you have for your informational meetings on that North Carver project?
Yes, I can do that. There will be informational meetings on this North Carver project at the Carver Public Library. There will be three of them, all open to the public. The first one started five minutes ago today at, from 10 until noon at the, at the library. The next one is on March 15th, which is next Tuesday, and that is from 6 till 8 p.m. And then, the third one is at, on Wednesday, the 23rd. Is that a Wednesday? Yes, Wednesday, the 23rd of March, from 1 to 4 in the afternoon. And there will also be a, an informational session at the Carver Council on Aging on Tuesday, the 29th of March, at 12:15, right around the lunch hour.
Thank you.
All right, those are the four that are planned so far.
Thank you. We appreciate you joining us this morning.
Okay, you're welcome. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Sabre.
Thanks, Sabre.
All right, next on our agenda is our 920 item, the MBTA Presentation, New Section 3A to the Zoning Act, Chapter 40A of Mass. General Laws. And we have our interim planner, Mr. Bott. Welcome back.
So, I printed for you the slides I'm going to go over.
Thank you. Sir?
Sorry for not having Matt P. earlier. It would start when I finished it.
So, once again, thank you for having me. I'm Tom Bottom, the interim town planner here in Carver. You notice I start a lot of conversations that way, so I remember what I'm doing and what I'm going to. So, the MBTA, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, in their law, Chapter 358 of the Acts of 2, 2020, amended the general laws of Massachusetts. 40A is what usually deals with zoning. And Section 3A is what's known as the MBTA law. It identifies Carver as one of 75 MBTA-adjacent communities. Now, this law affected, in total, 175 communities. There are communities that are transit, that are transit-related, that are bus services, and there are these adjacent communities. And Carver is one of the 75 MBTA-adjacent communities. There's MBTA services in Middleborough, and there are in Kingston, so we fall into that category. Carver will need, and need is in quotes, will need to create a 50-acre zoning district with 50 units per acre that would allow 750 multifamily units by right with no age or size restrictions in order to comply with the law. And if you fail to comply with the law, and you have until December 31st, 2014...
24.
24.
24, thank you. You won't be eligible for Housing Choice Initiative funds, local capital project funds, or Mass. Work Infrastructure funds. So, that is the hook the Commonwealth has that says, "If you don't create this type of zoning in your community, you're not eligible for these funds." Now, I did check to see to what extent is the town participating in these things, and I know that Mass. Works is one of those things that we're doing with, with Montella Road rebuild. So, that's the hook that the Commonwealth has put together for you. Now, the next 11 slides you don't need to see because that's the whole story on the first slide, but we put them together for you. And it basically says, under the law, that you have to provide for at least one district of reasonable size that permits this by right without restriction to the size of the units, the type of the units, that are suitable for families. So, we look at a lot of housing, production programs, housing plans like Carver's has done, and a lot of them look at what's the need for housing in the community. And a lot of people look at it and say, "Well, the need for housing in community is smaller units for empty nesters, ones in two-family units, and things like this." In the case of this law, they don't allow you to sort of prescribe to the size and the type of units. They're basically saying, "You've got to create zoning that allows you to build 750 units of housing in your community on a 50-acre site without regard to the size of the units or the type of the units." No age restrictions and things like that. Here's a map that shows that, you know, where we're at, and here's Carver right down here in the light green, in between Middleborough and Kingston, as an MBTA-adjacent community. Said there's rapid transit communities, there's bus service communities, there's commuter rail communities, and then there's us. And I think there's 75 MBTA-adjacent communities. So, once again, this gets back to that calculus that shows you how they got to 750. You've got 50 acres, 15 units per acre, you've got to create 750 units of housing. It has to be multifamily, and it has to be done by right. And by right means it's not a special permit. A special permit is one of those things that a lot of towns take comfort in because Massachusetts generally does great deference to the local boards in special permits. They are discretionary. They allow them to make conditions and things like that. Under this law, you would have to do that essentially through site plan approval. And site plan approval is prescriptive. You put together the things you have to do, and ask to have this many roads, this much pipe, this much, this type of design. And if someone does those things, then they get their permit. There's no extra conditions, there's no extra permitting and things like that, which are under special permit. They have to be done by right. And this, once again, drills down into that requirement under the draft guidelines. And one of the criticisms that the draft guidelines have, and are part of the comment period that we're in right now, that we're certainly welcome to comment back to DHCD on, is the law doesn't drill down to the extent that these things do, where they say "of reasonable size." And reasonable size is a perspective of a community. So, in the statute, it says "of reasonable size," but the guidelines say, "You've got to have 50 acres as a minimum. You can do a couple of areas, but 25 acres is the smallest contiguous space." That doesn't allow folks to do smaller type of units, smaller type of developments and things like that. In addition, when you look at what you have to do to create that sort of development, you've got to have one of those package treatment plants that we're just talking about, one of those private wastewater treatment plants. And you've got to have a well that's developed to provide water for those sort of units. So, you've got to develop, the eventual developer for something like this, if the zoning is passed, has to create infrastructure. They have to create a well, they have to create water, they have to create a wastewater treatment plant. But oftentimes, towns are constrained by how much water they can withdraw at a time. So, how does something like that work in practice for a town? Now, because you create the zoning, doesn't necessarily mean that someone's going to build that zoning. When someone looks at, "If I'm the developer and I'm going to build 750 units of housing, you know, I'm going to have to do all this infrastructure. I'm going to have to make a well, I'm going to have to make a plant, I'm going..." And they look at, "What is that going to cost me? If it's going to cost me..." I'm making up numbers here. "If it's going to cost me $10 million to do that, can I get $10 million in rents out of my project based on the market rate to make something like that happen?" If the basic rent for a unit like this, once again, I'm just making up numbers, is $2,500 a unit. In order for that developer to make that thing happen, can you get $2,500 a unit for an apartment in an area? So, if you zone it, they won't necessarily come. And a lot of communities are looking at, "Well, we really don't have the capacity to create that zoning. We don't have the capacity or to try to create some of these grants or try to go after some of these grants. So, you know, how do we, as a town, decide this is important enough for us to try to create this zoning, to be able to access these funds? And even if we do, is anybody going to build it?" And so, that's some of the comments, some of the criticisms that's come back in some of the seminars I've been to. And I provided, I think, in an earlier email, a draft comment letter from one of my colleagues about, you know, some of the concerns about the minimum size for a development, the contiguous, the requirements for infrastructure, particularly water and sewer on those things. But that is, in the long run, to 2024, you would have to do those things to comply with the law. For this year, for 2022, to comply with the law, we have to have this meeting. So, this is step number one, to have this meeting and discuss what the bylaw is. The second thing we have to do is we have to fill out a community information form and send it to the MBTA that basically says, "We had this meeting. Here are the questions we have. Does your community have an area within a half a mile of a transit station? Does your community have an area of concentrated development?" So, these are very easy questions to answer for us to keep in the game for 2022. There are opportunities for technical assistance, where you can go to your local regional planning agency, you can hire a consultant. And these are the questions they ask in this, in this information seminar. You know, I have to open my glasses on because even so on the screen, I can't quite see this. "Please tell us if any technical assistance you might need in order to comply with this." And I went through the form and just sort of checked some of the boxes that I thought might be applicable for us. We would need technical assistance to draft a multifamily zoning bylaw. We would need technical assistance to calculate multifamily capacity. And that gets back to another criticism that's been pointed out in the bylaw, in the draft guidelines, is that they want to make sure that you're not creating 50 acres of zoning out in a swamp. You go, "Oh, we've got 50 acres, you could put this stuff out there, but you can't build anything in it." So, they want you to calculate, you know, that multifamily capacity. And this, for a lot of smaller communities, has been described as owners. And we don't have the capacity to do that, to look at each of these parcels and decide the parcels we put into this, in place, you know, will support this type of density. So, those are some of the things that we can send in our form. Yeah, we need help drafting the bylaw, we need help calculating that capacity. And then, other technical assistance that you might ask for, support from your regional planning agency, a consultant could appear occurred by a state agency, or some model bylaws or ordinances. And this gets back to another criticism that's come up in the draft guidelines, is that how do we, as a town, if we, and this assumes that we want to go out and create this type of zoning? And keep in mind, there is a compelling need for multifamily housing all across the Commonwealth. If you build a quality multifamily unit, you will rent everyone that you can build, assuming that the price is right in the community. So, there's clearly a need for this, but is there a need or a capacity for this, at this scale? So, if you decide to create zoning for something like this, and you come to the state and you say, "Here's our zoning," you don't even know if it's going to comply because they don't have a review process beforehand. Now, when I was in Kingston, we spent a couple of years on a 40R bylaw on a sand pit next to the MBTA station. That zoning bylaw created a capacity for 720 units of housing, three-bedroom, two-bedroom, one-bedroom, 250,000 square feet of non-residential space, office space and things. The idea was that people are going to take the train to work in Boston, they could take the train to work in Kingston, and just take the commuter rail and get off at an office down here. And it included 50,000 square foot of retail space. So, that's a lot of stuff, 720 units of housing, 250,000 square foot of this, and 50,000 square foot of retail space. That zoning wouldn't comply with the current MBTA law because it's not 750 units. So, this has been approved because there's a need for it, and it gets back to the need for why we have multifamily laws in general. 40B is that thing that people always talk about as owners to the communities, but 40B was created in 1969 because of crisis of affordable housing in Massachusetts in 1969. That crisis has gone unabated, and people keep trying to figure out, "How do we make this happen?" Now, interestingly enough, in Carver, I think we've got 4,327 housing units on the last census, something to that effect. And in order to comply with 40B, you'd have to have 10% of your housing stock as affordable. You have to have 10% of your housing stock, 430 units, as affordable. This zoning would create 750 units, would create more units than is required under your affordable component. Now, there's nothing in the bylaw, nothing in the law, that requires these units to be affordable, but most communities would include something like this. In our Inclusionary Housing Bylaw, we would certainly include something like this to, if we're going to do something like this, to make sure that a percentage of those units were affordable, 20 to 25%. So, some development like this, if you were able to build it, if there was the capacity for it, if there was the infrastructure for this, it would certainly deal with a lot of issues of, you know, creating affordable housing, giving you safe shelter from 40B. But is it feasible for communities like Carver without the capacity, without the necessary land to put things together like this? And so, that's the rub for us here. So, for this year, we fill out the form, we send it in the process, and we're eligible for grants if we want to do additional grants for public works, for infrastructure grants over the next year or two. But the bigger picture is, does Carver have any appetite for creating this type of zoning? And what are the ramifications for that if they don't? So, for this year, we fill out a form, we send it in, we check the box, and we're still eligible for those grants. And if we're looking at pursuing some of those grants, then we certainly sharpen our pencil and look at pursuing them over the next year or two, prior to the December 31st, 2024, when the town has to be in full compliance with the MBTA community law. And be happy to take any questions.
Mr. Bott, we appreciate you reviewing this with us. Questions from the board? Mr. Bell?
All right, so, this is really, I knew this was coming. We had talked about a Mass. Municipal Association a couple of years ago when we first started and whatnot, about something coming down the pike, and I knew this was coming. Our accessory apartment bylaw is lacking. It needs to be updated, no matter what. We have a bunch of land down in South Carver that's AD make-piece land available. Who knows what's going to happen with that? Some of the issues that I see with this is the infrastructure issue of water and sewer not having a water system or a sewer system for large, large developments or whatnot for affordable housing. But needless to say, if we want grant money, which we, we do a lot of grants in this town for monies, for projects that is coming down the pike, so something's got to be done.
Well, and keep in mind, these are three specific grants. The Housing Choice Initiative, which the town likely doesn't qualify for because it's based on a number, amount of housing production. Mass. Works grants are the ones that are probably the most popular, used a lot in Plymouth, used a lot in a lot of communities, and here, from my brief survey of departments, used for the Montella Street project. But that was it. And one of the things about grants is, is there's no free lunch, there's no free money. In getting a grant, first off, you have to have the capacity, you have to have somebody to put together that grant application and do those sort of things. So, there's a lot of communities that are going to be affected by this, go, "We don't have, only even have a person who we do these grants for." So, I reiterate that there are, you know, these three grants that are available, there is a need for housing and for multifamily housing everywhere in Commonwealth, and including in Carver. But to what extent, to what scale, and to what location could we do those sort of things?
And one of the other things that I had to comment here, this town actually has a history of zoning out types of businesses anyways. Let's put a zoning district on the right-hand side of the road where there's wetlands and cranberry bogs, and there's very limited places to actually put a business. So, I mean, we do have a history of that. Quite familiar with it, and quite familiar with Chapter 40A, Chapter 40. But, yeah, I think we need to do something. The town does need to do something with affordable housing, and, like I said, I've been trying for years to make some changes to our existing bylaws, but this is what's coming down the pike.
Well, we've got two years to sort out to what extent we want to look at trying to comply with something like this. But with your, with your authorization, with your approval, I'll be happy to put together the application, put together the form that is due back on May 2nd, and, you know, share it with the board, share it with the planning board as well. And like I said, it's basically click the box. We had a meeting, here's the person who's doing this thing, you know, it's pretty rudimentary at this point.
Any other comments, Ms. Yon?
Just, just real quick, I think that we should let you return the form, obviously, and we have two years to think about it. But I am very concerned about the town's capacity. we have two years to think about it, but I am very concerned about the town's capacity. We have a very precious aquifer under us, as I'm sure you're aware, and I can't think of one parcel, one area of town where this could go. I mean, we can't tell Makepeace what to do with their land, that's kind of spot zoning. I can't for the life of me think of a 50-acre parcel anywhere that this could happen. That's my concern, and my concern is our water and our water quality.
And you're not alone. There's, you know, a lot of communities have got that exact same question. And it gets down to, you know, one of those comments is that, you know, we are constrained by how much water we can withdraw, and many towns are. I think just recently, we passed a threshold that allowed more water withdrawal for schools. I thought I saw something about that. But, you know, if you're constrained by how much water you can withdraw, how do you create enough water to support development of this size?
Right, well, my other concern is the DEP, their water withdrawal permits don't take into account safe yield. They just do the paperwork and you got a permit. And that's, I think that's really dangerous. I mean, we don't know what the safe yield is yet. How, in other words, how much water we can withdraw without it doing damage to our aquifer.
Anything else from the board?
I agree with Sarah, I think we definitely check off the box and send that in, but there's some major concerns about this, and I'd also be interested to know what some of these other communities, like you said, we've reached out to a couple already, but I think we're all going to have the same issues.
Yeah, and I'll be happy to, I'll be happy to, you know, basically move forward with some draft comments, basically reflecting concerns about density, location, water withdrawal for during the comment period, share with Bob, make sure on the same page with that, because that comment period expires on the end of the month. And as far as the community forum, May 2nd, so we'll run that by the planning board, run that by you guys, and come back with that and submit that, and then we're good for 2022.
Thank you very much.
And I would just echo the rest of the board's comments, and I think, you know, the state passes these types of issues, but they don't necessarily look at individual towns, you know, we don't, we're not an MWRA town. We have, there's nothing more important we can do than protect our water. If it becomes contaminated, that's an issue for everybody, and to try to contemplate this type of development can be, I don't see how we can do it. So, Mr. Fennessey, do you think we need a vote of the board to authorize Mr. Bott to respond?
That would be good.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
All right, we have a motion. Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you very much, Mr. Fennessey.
And I'll just close with, I think, a quote attributed to Ben Franklin, that there's two things you don't want to see made, sausage and legislation. So this is the legislation that they created.
I agree. Mr. Bott, while you're here, do you have anything to add on our 1040 item, discussion and possible vote on changing the name of the newly adopted portion of Montella Street to the Green Parkway? Is there anything?
I don't know, I'm going to sit in, but we talked about it briefly yesterday on a staff level meeting.
Okay.
So I think I understand the concept, but I'll be over here and listening in.
Okay. Mr. Fennessey, do you have anything on that?
I do. If I can find my paperwork here. Okay. Thank you, Tom. Okay, so we got a notice from, well, an advice memo from KP Law on changing the name of a portion of the street, because ultimately, there's two streets coming into one section, and you can't have the same name for the street. So the thought is to name it the Green, what was it called?
Green Parkway?
Green Parkway, yep. So there's a process that has to be done. The first is that it begins by an adoption of that name, by voting here, and then posting it with the town clerk, and putting a notice in the legal section of the newspaper. So that's the first. Second, well, I said, second is putting it in the newspaper. The third is to post the order of the town voting board and on the website, and copy to the town offices and boards that deal with streets, such as police and fire and so forth. The fourth is an appropriate sign has to be erected after the appeal period is passed. There's a 30-day appeal period, and then the town clerk would record the name of the change name. And then if we have a town map, then you notify the person who's in charge of the town map to change it there too. So it's a process. There's a 30-day appeal, but on an appeal, it would take 25 citizens to petition for an appeal, not just one. And the portion of the street has one resident on it, one resident house, but it also has a little sliver that's in Plimpton, a Plimpton portion that comes into the town. So the first thing to do here is to vote to change, to change the name, and then we'll follow up with these processes.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Yeah. Who picked the name, or they just say because it's a green business area?
I think because it just ties into the whole street and the whole project. I don't know who picked the name, was it the planning board?
The public safety officials and the building commissioner.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Another quick, so Clubden has to approve this as well?
No, they have a right to appeal, because they own a piece of that property. But again, it takes 25 people to file an appeal, so we don't expect that to happen.
I think the Plimpton resident can appeal though, that you have to be, you have to be an owner for 25 years, and the Plimpton resident has not been an owner of that land for 25 years.
Okay, so they're out of the appeal process.
Okay.
So it's really just this one resident.
All right, is there a motion to approve the name change?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. Next is the approval of the fiscal year '23 budget, and I see we have some other folks here. We have our, well, we had our finance director, I don't know if I see her anymore.
She just went in the office.
Do you want to take a two-minute break?
Yes, fine, we'll take a two-minute, we'll take a five-minute recess.
I like having that, it's good.
COVID funds.
I was going to say, we're going to use it, it's here.
We just got the air teams. We didn't have those before.
That's awesome. I don't mean to keep staring at Bob, but I was reading the screen.
I know.
It looked...
Did you guys present the school budget already to the finance committee?
We did.
Do we have a copy of it?
Because it's not here with the ones that we have. We just have the town side.
I didn't finish watching the whole video yet for FinCom.
Well, we didn't do, we presented to the finance committee on the 20.
Okay.
The last meeting was, I think, joint capital, right?
Right.
Yeah, so we didn't present that.
Okay, all right.
The media of '28.
All right.
So if you had to check and see, if you look at the media of '28, that's what you'll see.
What do you think I do when I time off? I watch videos.
So if I watch a video on this one, I watch because that is the 20.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, actually, I presented the school video.
I know, that's, I was just asking them about the, huh? No, 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 from this one here to this one here.
So Bob said he did it the other day. This one is just a condensed version that would put on like an appendix to the one. This one is more like a light head.
Okay. All right, so what I was looking, all right, what I was looking online more or less than was this, so I'm just looking at the figures that are different, that's it. This one's seven, this says 23, but that, this didn't, doesn't look like it included. I don't know, I guess it did. Okay, those numbers, I'm not a math genius here.
Yeah, so 439.
So, yeah, 39, okay, all right, all right. Okay. All right, I just got to go further down the line.
Yeah, so this one's for the one.
Okay.
We don't want all this stuff on the one, and we're going to pick apart every single one. Those are salary and expenses here, and this one's salaries.
All right, yeah, expenses, yeah, okay. 75, thanks. Thank you. All right, good.
So nothing has changed, right?
No.
Same, just condensed. So this is still our appendix?
That's the same appendix.
Perfect, thank you.
All right. All right, we are back in session. Our next item is the approval of the fiscal year '23 budget. Mr. Fennessey, we also are joined by Sue Moklin, our finance director.
And also the school is here, the school.
Thank you. Again, would you like to, there's a microphone available.
Okay. Okay, so just briefly, the process for the budget began back in the fall of 2021. And then there we had a change of, we had a change of the finance director, we had a change of the town administrator, and at one point, one of the finance committee members called it the perfect storm, and that kind of put us a little behind. But fortunately, today, we're here with the full budget, it's been approved by the FinCom, and thanks to Alan Jermaine and the whole FinCom for holding multiple meetings so we can get to this point. So we have a balanced budget to present. You'll see that the last year, well, this year, it came in under 2%, 1.84%, which is phenomenal. So if you want to go through some of it, be happy to answer questions, and I do want to thank Sue Moklin for all the work she's put into it, and Elaine Weston, who also worked on the budget early on, and the school committee and the school administration also, Ron and Scott, so.
Before we get into individual questions to the board, why don't you go through and highlight some of the more important spots here, if you or Ms. Moklin would like to do that?
So I'll start. So again, coming in late on the train, so to speak, I had a chance to kind of look over the budget over the month of February, January, February, came on January 1st that week, and found some things that I wanted to bring to the finance committee, but most of the things had already been done by Rick, LaFawn, and Sue. So some of the highlights that came later in the process was the veteran services. I saw a need to increase the hours of veteran services to help protect our veterans and getting their benefits. We only had two part-time positions there. So they brought it to the finance committee, and they approved the increase from one person to a full-time position. So that's going to have an impact on the veteran services. Another area that found, and maybe I'm just more tuned to what the needs of people, was at the council on aging. They had an outreach worker who, that position was a 19-hour position. And because of what's transpired with COVID over the last two years, more and more seniors are staying home. They're not going out to the community, they're afraid to go out, and they need services, and they need somebody to outreach, to get to them and see what they need for assistance, setting them up for programs and so forth. So similar to the veterans, I brought forth to the FinCom request to increase one of that position to a full-time position, and after discussion, they voted unanimously in favor of that too. So those two, from my perspective, were very important, didn't cost a lot. The outreach worker, $30,000 of the salary is paid by the formula grant, which takes the edge off. It's only another, I think, $19,000 to increase that. So, and if you look, you know, some of these percentages are all over the place, but they reflect different steps and grades that are involved in that, in the percentages. Some, you'll see percentages of like 233.33% increase, and that's because it went from $30 to $100. So it looks crazy when you see that number. But overall, again, when you look through the whole budget, the bottom line, and that's what we really have to look at, because the bottom line is a 1.84% increase. So it's great. If you want to pick up on anything?
During the budget process, Ron Griffin and I had also spoke a lot to try to make things clearer. So we moved the health insurance and the Plymouth County retirement above the split, just to make it cleaner. There's, just didn't seem like there was any reason for both parts of the town to have their own health insurance line item, just pay for it and get it over with. It is what it is. And it changed the split between the school and the town to 67.5% for the school and 33.5% for the town. But it changed the split, so we obviously need you guys to vote on the change in the split, because the policy is 69.88 something percent for the school. So it did help a little bit by moving that around. The school was very helpful with doing that. Before we did that, the school was in the black and the town was in the red, and we would have had to try to figure out how to cut things down, and by doing this, you know, above-the-line kind of thing for shared cost, it really helped so that we both could get the needs filled.
But just to be clear for the folks at home, that doesn't change the amount of money going to the school, it just changes where some of the bills are being paid.
Correct.
Correct. And is there any, would Mr. Neef or Mr. Griffin, do either one of you want to comment on this? And if you do, I'd ask you to step up to the microphone, but, no?
You're good.
I spoke well on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
So if I may, Ms. Moklin, so what is the split now?
It is 67.5% for the school and 32.5% for the town.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And just back to your comments, Mr. Fantasy, I think those, those two changes you initiated are very important. I think anything we can do for our veterans, to help the veterans or help our seniors is very important, and I appreciate you taking action there.
Thank you, and I just don't want it to be misconstrued that there's been no other changes. You know, there's been changes throughout this process with the finance committee, who, again, they're very, very good, looked at every, every budget and went through them with a fine-tooth comb and, and approved every single line item, so.
And I, and I think you can't underestimate the amount of, of, of change we've had in, in town hall and on the finance side with a, a new finance director and a new interim town administrator. It does take everybody a little bit of time to get, get ramped up and just get on the same page. And I appreciate all the hard work that you folks have put in, I think the whole town does with, with just the extra time it took to get everything put together in such a short amount of time, so.
I agree.
And with that, I had opened it up to comments from the board. Mr. Neef?
Mr. Talbot, I guess I got a opportunity, since you've offered a couple of times.
Since there's a microphone available, Mr. Neef.
So Scott Neef, superintendent of the Carpool Schools. And the only thing I wanted to say was I just wanted to thank Sue and Robert and Rick and Ron for all the work they did. It really was a collaborative process, so I want the board to be aware that this was a collaborative process between the town and the school to come up with a system that, that was gonna be beneficial for both of us. And that we're moving the insurance above the line, we thought long-term was the right thing to do for the community. And, and I do, so we're fully supportive of that, and was fully supportive of the new split. And it's just been, it really has been a collaborative process. And I guess I just wanted to publicly recognize Sue and Ron, and Ron, the business administrator for the schools, they did a lot of work on this and spent a lot of time together. And then appreciative of Robert in terms of his role coming in on January first and being, being willing to consider these things. I could understand coming in at that time and, and being thrown into it a little bit and saying, well, let's just keep things the way they are. So I appreciate his being open to say, and he said to me, I don't know if he's ever said this to me, said, you know, for the time I'm here, my job is to do what I think is in the best interest of the town, and to make the right decisions for the town, and, and we all believe that that, that that's the right decision. So I just wanted to always take a moment to say that and thank, thank everybody.
So I, I appreciate that, and I hope everyone knows, that's not, the collaborative process we have here between the different, different agencies and departments in town, it's not always that way in every town. So I think we really need to be thankful that we have people in a position to, that are willing to work together for the benefit of the town, so.
I agree, a hundred percent, thank you all.
So with that, questions from the board? Mr. Baldwin?
I answered my first question about the FinCom of why it, it's so high, but that includes the grant money, the twenty-five thousand dollar grant money. So just letting people know, we, we have a, the short form and then we have the long form. So going back and forth from, I want to thank you guys first for getting this to us the other day, I haven't went through it all, I started to, but thank you very much for getting that to us. Where was I? So I answered that question, the next one under the finance, it went up a hundred thousand dollars, was there a reason why?
Finance. So. What's the total?
I know twenty thousand of it is for tax title-taking. And just looking at the rest of it, it looks like it's just contractual salaries.
Okay, well, that's fine, just want to make sure people understand. Computer operating, that's a new expense here, it looks like, because it's never been on here before.
We changed the name from data processing to computer, right?
Yeah, but when we combined the school and the town IT, the town didn't, the town-side town hall did not fund for incidentals for the town hall. So when we combined the IT, it was more the salaries and, and some contractual services, but we didn't account for if a computer broke down in town hall. So police department, the fire department, they all have their IT budget, but the town did not have its IT budget for the last two years, once this was combined. So we do need to have some contractual services in there for, if somebody does need a new laptop or a new computer, there's, there's things in there. And there's also some website contracts and, and things like that that we need to pay for, that were not accounted for in FY twenty-one.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay.
The town clerks, is there any extra staff added to that or no for that department? Yeah, it didn't look like it, so.
No.
All right. Oh, the land use, I had to read my own writing here. Does that include the, the permitting, the program that we have for permitting, is that included in that, too?
The permitting is in there, yes.
And the police department, does that include any new employees?
That includes, I believe, one, one new employee and the contract that they agreed to.
And the new contract, thank you. Under the EMS ambulance, does this include the payment of employees for their orientation period or the quote volunteer time? Is that included in that?
That's been addressed.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Thank you for bringing it to my attention.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the veterans, staff, to get that put in there, that's really good. The under-call firefighters, LOSAP, what, what's that acronym?
That's, I don't know the acronym, but that's their retirement.
Their retirement, all right. If I don't mind asking, how much is, how much is their retirement?
I'm not sure, bottom line, but they're not included in the Plymouth County retirement because they're on-call, so they, they have a different type of retirement.
Okay, so all for it. You know what, was that it? Oh, conservation, why isn't conservation and, my conversation, planning, conservation zoning, and then the building inspectional services, those are all separate? When we have one department, is it?
No, they're separate departments.
Separate departments, but I think they categorize together.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they have been, that's not a change.
All right. And then I know this was brought up at the FinCom that we had like a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in a snow budget. I just kind of want to address that for a second, is that years and years ago, and I'm sure you guys remember, we used to keep money in the budget and save fifty thousand dollars. If we didn't use it that year, it just rolled over to the next one, if we didn't have any much, it kept in that account, and it keeps snowballing. When we had a really big storm, you draw from that. I like that idea, but I think we were told we couldn't do that anymore, or something like that.
There's a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in there, but the vote was taken in two thousand nineteen, so it was one vote for one amount.
Right.
And it's just been carried forward since then. And it said, I, don't quote me exactly, but it seemed like it was for a deficit in the prior year. So it should have actually been raised on the recap rather than put into the budget. And so they just keep carrying it forward, and I feel that it should be closed out to either a capital item that we need or to free cash for next year.
No, I, I want to say thank you very much. I think a lot, over the many, many years that we've had, funds have been diverted in certain areas by whoever it was. But it was like, all right, if we ever need it, we can draw from this. So it was kind of someone's rainy day fund that people didn't really think about, and if we didn't see it, it wasn't there. So I want to thank you very much, Sue, for bringing this, and if any other ones that are there, please bring to us. Because saving our taxpayer money and making sure it goes where it's supposed to go is really important to all of us, so.
There's, there's a few of them, and, and I am talking with the department heads and to see whether those particular warrant articles or capital articles are actually necessary anymore. And if they're not, we're gonna close them out next year or during this year.
No, like I said, I just want to say thank you very much, I appreciate it. And with that, I'm done.
All right, anyone else? If I could just ask you, Ms. Moklin or Mr. Fantasy, you mentioned the warrant, the warrant articles and closing, the closing out old warrant articles. Do we have a process, I thought we did, maybe I'm, maybe I'm wrong, where we regularly at the, at the end of the fiscal year sort of go through and sweep those articles and see what's left? And if not, we move that money into free cash, am I incorrect?
Hasn't happened for, there's articles there from two thousand fifteen, sixteen. We're reviewing.
Going forward, I think that would be a good process to put in place, because there's really no reason to leave that money there. So, okay, Mr. Baldwin?
No, just to go along with it, we, there has been times where we've wrought up at town meeting, that we've moved from money from one to another or whatnot because it wasn't used. So that has happened in the past, but like I said, it's great that we're gonna get back on board, and thank you.
And just one other thing, just so you know, we are starting, well, we're in negotiations with the dispatchers in the highway, and we'll be starting with the clerical, too. All of them expire this year, so that's not reflected in here. But does an article on town meeting warrant, if we have any, any collective bargaining increases, we could put the number in there.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board? Okay, I, I do see Stephanie Clowery, the chairman of the school committee here, Ms. Clowery, is there anything you wanted to add before we?
Thank you for, thank you for offering, I just echo Scott's, and we just appreciate the collaborative relationship that we have and all the efforts that we put into reinforcing the budget that will, you know, that our entire community.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Fantasy, Ms. Moklin?
No, just two points.
Yeah, just to make sure that you guys take the vote for the new split, because the school is dependent on presenting that to the committee at their next meeting, that, that number that we have given them is what they can work with.
So, Mr. Fantasy, are you recommending that we take two separate votes, a vote on the split and then a vote to approve the budget in whole?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm with that we approve the split, the new split as outlined by Ms. Moklin.
Sixty-seven point five, thirty-two point five, correct?
Right.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none?
No, I just want to say thank you guys for all working together, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Is there a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-three, what, twenty-twenty-three budget?
Assumed.
Second it.
Motion and a second discussion?
This is just for the town side, for the, for the budget, correct?
Well, it's the bottom line.
Yeah, bottom line is the school, so if you approve the split, you're approving the school's number as well.
Yeah, bottom line, it's on that last page of the.
And we're just, it's not, it's just one lump sum for them, correct?
Right.
All right, because it is here, so thank you.
Anything else?
All right.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you very much, everybody, we appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Ron, thank you, Scott.
Mr. Neef, can we get a copy of an itemized school, do you have that?
Absolutely.
Just forward it over to us when you get a chance, thank you.
Yeah, that way you can distribute it to everybody, that would be wonderful, thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Minutes, licenses, topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting, there are none. Our next meeting is March fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two, which will also include a joint meeting with the finance committee, approval of the minutes of February fifteenth.
Do we know what time the meeting's gonna be on the fifteenth?
We, we write, right now, that meeting is scheduled for six o'clock. There are a couple of things that might possibly mean we might want to start it a little earlier, maybe five-thirty, is that an issue?
Yep.
No conflicts?
Okay.
No, right now it's scheduled for six o'clock, but we'll have an agenda going out pretty shortly.
Okay, thank you.
All right, minutes of February fifteenth.
I'll make a motion we approve.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion?
Can we get a copy of the, the letter from Mr. Mahaw? It's not here in this packet that we have, if you could back, forward that to us, please.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous, there are no select board notes this morning, select board community announcements, Mr. Baldwin?
My first one is, again, Ukraine is going through a terrible war, and my thoughts and prayers go out to those residents out there. It's, it's a travesty that, what's going on. It really hurts that the United States isn't doing more to help these people from an angry dictator, so that's my first one. My second one is, I want to thank Tom O'Brien, I'm putting my waste district hat on. He's worked with us for a number of months to look at what we have for finances, what we can do with our money, we have about one point one, one point two million, somewhere around there, that we need to protect. And we need it to grow, because right now we're just getting our regular interest from the bank for savings or whatever. He's given us some great opportunities to invest our money, to protect it in the future, and he's offered many solutions to us. So I think he's been a great asset to Plymouth County and to the district, so I just want to say thank you very much, Tom. And then I want to thank Anne Matton Ford, our payroll clerk, she's taken another job in another town, and her many years of service, I want to thank you, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman?
First, I just want to, I want to thank Bob Fantasy and Sue Moklin and Ron Griffin and Scott and everyone involved with this budget. I know it wasn't easy, especially everybody stepping in various stages of this, so I want to thank them, and I think it's a great budget, and, and I'm just very pleased that everybody could work together. Like Mark said, that doesn't happen in all towns, and I know it didn't happen in this town all the time either, so it's a great teamwork, which I'm really proud of. And then second, I just want to, I want to keep Shane and their thoughts as well.
Thank you.
Ms. Jones?
Thank you. I know this has been said already, but I'd like to thank Mr. Fantasy, our interim town administrator, and Sue Moklin, our new finance director, in particular for considering our veterans and our seniors and increasing those two positions from part-time to full-time. I, I think that's gonna make a big difference, and it's long overdue, so I'm much, much appreciated.
Thank you.
And I also, I want people to remember Shane as well.
And I guess for myself, I just, several people have said this, but I don't think we can say enough how lucky we are in this town to have department heads and different parts of the town that can come together and work together and just get things done like this budget. You don't see this in every town, and I, I'm not sure people appreciate just how unusual it is, I think, to have this kind of cooperation. So I think, Mr. Fantasy, you're the, you're the interim town administrator, you're the, the head, and I think a lot of it, a lot of credit for that goes to you and the job you're doing. But Ms. Moklin and the school and everyone, I just, I don't think we can compliment them enough, so I, so thank you.
Thank you, and just to pick up on that, you know, I've been in several towns, and I've said this over and over, you don't see that, that cooperation. You usually see infighting over capital items, over, it could be on anything, budgets, it could be policies, everything, and I don't see that here. You know, I see everybody working together for a common goal, and that's what we should be doing, I mean, that's my mind. I mean, that's my mantra, is to make sure we all work together, so.
And I think what you see when you have that kind of cooperation is you're able to find money in the budget to improve, you know, improve the life of our seniors and improve money...find money for the veterans. And that's what happens when we can all work together in that way, so. So thank you. And I also want to mention, because I have had some people reach out to me. Kevin Forg, a health agent, does have some COVID tests left over from the distribution that took place a couple of weeks ago, and those are available down in his office if anyone wants to stop in and pick some up. And I think someone mentioned to me there may be some available at the library as well. I'm not sure if they still have any or not, but just so folks know. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you.